Good evening, everyone. I would like to bring the March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Interbar Board of School Directors to order. Ms. Caldwell, can we have a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mr. Frallinger, Ms. Krajewski, Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Here.
Ms. Joseph?
Here.
Ms. Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Chavon?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here. Okay, and Mr. Evans, can we have the invocation and the pledge, please?
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interbar School District. And grant to this board and their deliberations this evening the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this, we ask in your name, amen. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are, oh, I got double vision. I got two Francesca's up here. Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll hear from, uh, the reports from our student representatives now. Uh, Ms. Parker? Would you like to start, or Ms. Hughes, either one?
For the kindergarten county, the report cards were sent home with the students on Friday, February twenty-sixth, and will be discussed at the student conference. The students are looking forward to a fun-filled month with activities such as Read Across America Week. Also, the students came home with this year's One Book, One School selection. The littles, each year, every family at the Kinder and Academy receives a book to read as a family, and there are voluntary activities associated with it that are signed as well.
At Glen Olden School, February was a month that will go down in the books for the most snow days at Glen Olden. Our students adapted amazingly going back and forth from virtual to in-person as Mother Nature enjoyed playing games with us. Thank you for our custodians for all their hard work clearing the many inches of snow multiple times. Our home and school surprised us with yummy pretzels for Valentine's Day. It was definitely a great treat, and we were all so thankful. Our crazy hair/hat spirit day was pushed back due to snow, but students definitely displayed their awesome hairstyles on February twenty-eighth. The create, the creativity was endless. A special thanks to Mr. Stu for promoting Black History Awareness Month to us every morning. We all look forward to hearing about a part of history during his morning announcements. We have all learned it is important to recognize various cultures every day and not just during one month. We are all learning so much each day.
For Norwood, the week of March, Thursday, fifth, was Dr. Seuss Week. Each day, the students and teachers participated in celebrating Dr. Seuss. Monday, Cat in the Hat, Crazy Hat Day. Tuesday, Fox and Sox, Silly Sox. Wednesday, the Sleep Book, pajama day. Thursday, Oh, the Places You Will Go College, where it were sports team. And Friday, Green Eggs and Ham, War Green. In celebration of Dr. Seuss's birthday, Mr. Mills, Dr. Costa, and Mrs. Lennon read Dr. Seuss's book to our second grade students. Mr. Don Dougherty, a storyteller from Classroom Adventures, made a presentation to our first grade classes on Dr. Seuss Day. Classroom Adventures came to life fourteen years ago in our first grade classrooms, and Don returns every year to help us celebrate Read Across America Week. Thank you to Norwood Home and School for always supporting the programs we bring in for our children. Norwood School is pleased to announce that its STEM teacher, Dr. Chris Goldberg, was selected as one of the ten FMSEU Foundation Teacher Mini Grant Recipents this year. The grant is being administered through the Franklin Federal Credit Union Foundation, award ten teachers in Delaware County with mini grants totaling over forty-five hundred dollars. Dr. Goldberg's award is for four hundred and fifty-one dollars to purchase specialized cardboard and statutory kits that promote, among other things, the engineering design process and challenge. These kits will be utilized in the classroom and also with some clubbers.
At Prospect Park, across the school, our students spent the month of February researching and discussing significant African-American figures throughout history. Some classes explored stories written by or about famous black people. Other students researched figures and utilized the many new technologies supporting our current learning models, such as Padlet, to showcase their findings and show the important contributions of black Americans. One important takeaway was the message that black history is not just a month. It is twenty-four, seven, and three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
For Tinacum, for Black History Month at Tinacum School, fourth graders practice their presentation skills by designing Google Slides or boards using the Black History Periodic Table to research African-American scientists, inventors, athletes, entrepreneurs, artists, scholars, petitions, authors, actors, and musicians. Our hallway display is a testament to the amazing accomplishments of these great African-Americans of today and yesterday. Our monthly PBIS is for showing respect, responsibility, honesty, healthy, and safe. Our Cole, Moir, Casey Hooper, and Peter Wheaton. They won a lunch of their choice from Wawa on March fourth. Tinacum has many talented students and students positive attitudes, and we have all of them. Tinacum School's social studies students dedicated time during the month of February to expand students' understanding, importance, and appreciation of Black History Month. The goal is to go behind the traditional lessons that are taught in primary grades about Martin Luther King Jr., Rosa Parks, Harriet Tubman, and others, and attempt to broaden their knowledge about black history and emphasize the idea that black history is American history. Students are introduced to contributions of important black inventors, scientists, politicians, activists, entrepreneurs, authors, historians, and artists. Throughout the month, students created individual tablets that served as a digital, digital college to highlight the most important achievements, influences, and impacts.
At the high school, the wrestlers had a great season, and two of our wrestlers qualified for states at Hershey this season. Congratulations to Coach Dan Tovin and his wrestlers, Dom DiAgostino and Nate Chippy. Interbar Theater will be having their play this year online for March nineteenth and twentieth. Please visit our website for the link. The fall sport season has begun and will run until April tenth. And the SATs were held at the high school on March thirteenth, and this concludes our report.
Thank you, Ms. Parker and Ms. Hughes. We'll move on to number three, recognition. Ms. Riley, there's none? Correct, okay. All right, moving on to number four. Do we have any public comments, Mr. Evans, by chance?
No, sir.
All righty, then we're gonna jump right on down to number five.
Motion five point one, that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interbar Board of School Directors held on February seventh, two thousand and twenty-one be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries seven zero. Next, we will hear from our solicitor, Mr. Pupio.
Good evening, Mr. President and Board members, and Ms. Riley and Ms. Caldwell. Our office has had a busy month, obviously, still with this pandemic and working with the administration with, unfortunately, all things pandemic-related, as well as working with the intermediate unit to, uh, to assist in getting our teachers vaccinated as quickly as we possibly, quickly and safely as we possibly can to assist, uh, the district, you know, begin, uh, to place a plan in place, uh, to educate the children. So, um, we've been involved with tax appeals as well on an ongoing basis, uh, but there is no, uh, there is no major litigation or major reports, uh, to provide you this evening. Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Pupio. Moving on to, uh, number seven, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Finance, motion seven point one, that the tax treasurers report for the month ending February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion seven point two, the fund disbursements in the amount of four million, seven hundred and one thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixteen cents be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Uh, no correspondence, Mr. Evans?
No, sir.
Move right on to number nine, committee reports. First up, we'll have nine point one, Mr. Chavon, Finance?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. The finance meeting was held on Monday, March eighth at seven PM. We had our monthly budget updates, review potential increases and current deficits, and we had two department budget, uh, presentations. In terms of the budget update, unfortunately, we had to reduce our state funding by about one point three million dollars due to ongoing negotiations in Harrisburg. We believe this is the worst-case scenario reductions, and we are hopeful that this, uh, the, the governor and the legislature will come to an agreement, uh, with, uh, the basic ed funding formula that hopefully we will see an increase, you know, over the next couple of months as they negotiate the final, uh, state budget. We are working to reduce expenditures as best we can without tremendously altering the education of our students. We reduced, um, we were able to reduce salary and benefits by about nine hundred thousand due to retirement and a lower-than-expected increase in healthcare of only two point nine percent. Uh, as those that have watched the budget, um, the past couple of years, our finance director usually, uh, allocates a five percent increase in January, and as we get the first look and second look, um, that comes in a little bit lower. Uh, there was an increase to the curriculum instruction line item for purchases of elementary and secondary textbooks. We are working, um, on using the federal money to purchase these items, which would help lower that expenditure, uh, and that, that budget department or that department's budget, uh, presentation is next month. As of March eighth, we decreased the deficit by about half a million dollars. At a zero percent tax increase, we still are looking at a one point eight million dollar deficit, and at a three point five percent tax increase, which is our, the highest we could potentially go, we have a two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar deficit. And obviously, it's only March, so we're still working to fine-tune those, uh, department budgets, and as I said, hopefully, the state, uh, basic ed formula is increased a little bit. Um, the impact of a three and a half percent tax increase on the average assessed household in Interbar of a hundred and fifty-six thousand would be about fourteen dollars a month. Um, so again, three point five percent is the highest we could, uh, raise taxes, which historically this board does not, um, go close to the, uh, max index. In terms of specific department budgets, uh, Mr. Galloway presented his department budget for facilities. There's one major decrease in the operations of building services line item of about fifty thousand dollars and slight, and some slight increases to other line items. Overall, the facilities would see a reduction compared to last year of forty thousand dollars. Ms. Lambert and Mr. Snyder also presented their special education budget, which is broken down into two department budgets. First, the people services budget will see a decrease of about five hundred and forty-two thousand compared to last year's budget. This is mainly due to decreasing charter school tuition based on enrollment projections. Ms. Lambert and Mr. Snyder have worked tremendously hard to bring our students back to our building to get a quality education, and our cyber program, um, is tremendous and ha, ha, and is, uh, far surpassing the education of, um, cyber school. So if any parents out there are watching that have their kids in cyber charters, um, come back to our, our cyber program, it's, uh, you'll get a really quality education. The special education budget, um, will see an increase of a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. This is due to increasing private school tuitions for our emotional support students, as well as increasing in professional services for our students with disabilities, specifically line items for deaf and hearing impaired and autistic support. Ms. Lambert and Mr. Snyder also shared the success of our access program, which has been a priority for the department to get funds that offset some of the special education costs. With that being said, um, they did present four potential positions that they need to support our students, um, which we, the board has asked for a little bit more information in terms of, of the financial impact. Um, two of the four positions would be paid through access money. Um, Ms. Lambert and Mr. Snyder will provide more details on the cost of these positions at our next budget meeting. If the board approves these moves forward with these positions, um, it would impact the deficit, as I mentioned earlier. Those positions, um, that they had mentioned at our finance meeting are an autistic support teacher for the high school, a more intensive life skills elementary classroom, a speech teacher, and an E L, um, an E L teacher. Um, finally, we also discussed any, uh, preliminary financial statements. Uh, this was, now, the next item wasn't at the finance meeting, but it deals with finance at our work session meeting. We did discuss, um, the potential bond re-finance, which will be, uh, the board will be pursuing and discussing, um, at next month's meeting. And that is it, Mr. Phelps.
All righty, Mr. Chavon, thank you. Moving on to nine point two, GBO committee, uh, Mr. Goldsboro? You're muted, sir.
My students have to tell me, remind me of that sometimes, too. Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
Thanks.
Um, uh, the GBO meeting, uh, took place on March eighth, and during that meeting, the school leadership team presented, uh, mid-year data on, uh, student academic achievement and academic growth. Um, the presentation included a, a number of students who were, the number of students who are currently enrolled in in-person, hybrid, and cyber learning environments. Uh, the data was broken down by grade bands and showed positive student growth. It also showed that the students were performing in academic levels similar to previous school years. Um, and, uh, the school leaders also gave areas of focus for the rest of the school year uh, to continue to support students in the classroom. Um, and, uh, our next GBO meeting will be on, uh, Monday, April twelfth. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsboro. Moving on to nine point three, legislative, uh, update, Mr. Chavon?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. The Legislative Council met on March tenth at seven thirty. Um, the first item, we had State Rep, uh, Cersei, um, of the Springford, Montgomery County area, um, present a little bit of the, um, optimistic tone of the Education Committee in terms of charter school reform. Um, he just, he mentioned how the, the Chair of the Education Committee is, um, does believe that there needs to be reform. It just needs to get to the, the leadership in the House and the Senate, uh, the State House and, um, State Senate, to see if there's going to actually be, um, real reform that could, uh, save school districts some money. But with COVID and the impact of, uh, students going to cyber programs, there is more of a push, uh, to, um, make some adjustments. He, Rep Cersei, uh, Cerisi, I think, I think that's how you say it. Rep Cerisi was also the president of a school board, so he brings that knowledge to the Education Committee, which I think is really important. Um, there were two, uh, state groups that just shared their support for the governor's budget, and that they will be PA School Works, who, they will be, um, holding press conferences and, um, public relations campaigns to get some more funding for the basic ed formula. The next item, the, the PA Senate Education Committee, uh, sent a letter to the Biden administration urging them to waive, uh, state assessments. Right now, they, the Biden administration is still saying that schools need, or states need to provide the state assessments. There is some flexibility, but, um, it is still mandated that we do, you know, have those state assessments. And then lastly, uh, the Legislative, uh, Director provided a, a comprehensive list of potential bills during this House session. Um, it's about ten pages long. Um, if any of those bills come to fruition, I will update as, uh, they impact Interbar. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavon. Moving on to nine point four, Delaware County Community College, Mr. Goldsboro?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Phelps. Uh, yeah, the, the Delaware County Community College, uh, our next liaison meeting is taking place on, uh, on Thursday, April first. And, um, at that, at that meeting, we'll be getting an update on, uh, you know, things that are going on at Delaware County Community College, and also, uh, I think we'll be getting, uh, some finalized numbers uh, for our budget also, so we'll know the contribution, uh, that will be, uh, that will be asked of, uh, of the school board. So, um, I'll have more to report then.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsboro. Moving on to nine point five, Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, everyone. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met on March third, approved the contract with Interbar School District, with the DCIU to provide threat assessment training and consultation services from June first, two thousand and twenty-one to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Also approved the amendment with the contract with Penn Delco School District to provide consulting regarding suicide risk assessment training. Also, we have, we approved the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty, well, let's try this again. We approved the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two Intermediate Unit General Operation Budget. Also approved was the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two special education budget. Also approved was the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two Delaware County Technical School Budget. Uh, approved the contract with William Penn School District for the DCIU to provide human services, resources, consultation services. Approved, uh, the employment of contract with Mr. Edward Norris Jr. as the new Chief Financial Operations Officer, starting June first, two thousand and twenty-one to May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Approved and accept for a food service, uh, equipment grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Education for the Aston Cafeteria in the amount of seven thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-five cents. Also, one other thing. I have a quick update for the, uh, for the vaccination at the DCIU. It's been extended from, through March twenty-second. The Delaware County has been allocated about twenty-five hundred vaccines for round one. These allocations are for the public schools, which include four brick-and-mortars char, and charter schools in Delco, the DCIU, and non-public and private schools. This will bring the total allocations for vaccines for the education educators in the, in round one for seventy-seven hundred, as of Monday, March fifteenth, three thousand, two hundred and forty educators have been vaccinated in the county. Today, we are targeting to vaccinate another four hundred and thirty, four hundred and thirty individuals. The next board meeting will be April seventh at seven forty-five, and it will be in person at the Morton Facility. That is all I have, Mr. Phelps.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Uh, at this time, uh, Ms. Parker, Ms. Hughes, uh, we appreciate your reports. You should be excused if you would like.
Thank you, ladies. Have a good night.
You too.
All righty, yeah, we're gonna move on to a number ten, Mr. Evans, personnel.
From the Office Personnel, motion to the following personnel actions be approved, starting with ten point one on page two, going to ten point eight on page six.
You're muted.
I did second it. I was muted, though. I apologize.
Okay. Motion has, or motions have been, uh, motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motions carry seven zero. Next up, Mr. Evans?
Motion that, with regret, that the following retirement be approved. Eleven point one, Margaret Magrario, librarian at Norwood in Prospect Park Schools with twenty-eight years of service to the district, be approved for retirement effective June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Just wanted to thank her for her long, many years of service. She is a great librarian, and, uh, I know a great help to my children and all the children that came thereafter.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion eleven point two, John Camerata, business teacher with twenty years of service to the district, be approved for retirement effective June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Again, uh, another long-term employee that will be missed. Uh, we have had a few over the years, you know, that have left us, and, uh, as the librarian and the business teacher and so many more, and, uh, they put so much into their, their jobs and into this district, and we just want to let them know that we do appreciate it. I know we're in a gold watch, but we do appreciate it. Hearing any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Next up, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, uh, motions of the following items be approved, twelve point one to twelve point seven.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motions carried seven zero. Next up, Mr. Evans, thirteen?
From the Office of Special Education and People's Services, motion that the following items be approved, thirteen point one to thirteen point six on page eight.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion, get, motions carry seven zero. Next up, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Technology, motion that the following items be approved, fourteen point one and fourteen point two.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motions carry seven zero. Next up, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Facilities, motion to the following items be approved. Fifteen point one, that the Board of School Directors approved the DCIU joint purchasing bid for trash removal with Republic Services LLC. This bid is for a three-year agreement in the amount of forty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars, forty-two cents for the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Forty-six, one, seven, two dot seven, seven for the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and forty-seven thousand, five, fifty-seven, ninety-five for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to be paid out of district funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Next up, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Finance, motion to the following items be approved, sixteen point one and sixteen point two.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motions carry seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion seventeen is a roll call motion that the Board of School Directors approved the general operating budget of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit for the fiscal year July one, two thousand and twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, in the amount of nine million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars and eight, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Interbar School District share is thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and eighteen.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, Ms. Caldwell, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yeah.
Mr. Chavon? Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. And next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion eighteen is a roll call motion that the Board of School Directors approved the general operating budget of the DC, Delaware County Area Vocational Technical School for the fiscal year July twenty, July first, two thousand and twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, in the amount of fourteen million, nine hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and two dollars. Interbar School District share is Interboro School District share is eight hundred and sixty seven thousand, fifty two dollars.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, Ms. Caldwell, again, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chavon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion nineteen is also a roll call motion that the Board of School Directors approved the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Special Education Funding and Service Agreement for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two in the amount of nineteen million, three hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and forty three dollars. Interboro School District share is four hundred and seventy three thousand, twenty six dollars.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, Ms. Caldwell, will we have a roll call on this, please?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chavon? Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion twenty, to accept the limited scope engagement letter from the law firm of Biorio and Sereni, LOPE, as special counsel for Interboro School District and narrowly rate of one hundred and ninety five dollars and one hundred dollars for legal assistance time for residency matters.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Just a clarification, Mr. Phelps, for, for board at, for board and public edification. In a residency hearing, there needs to be a representative for the adminis, by law, there needs to be a representative for the administration as well as the board. Hence, the requirement of a second law firm. Mr. Serini's firm is an experienced firm. I have played the same role for him in the firms that, in the districts that he represents as counsel. Their firm is, is a fine firm. And, you know, as we get back to in-person education, you know, residency is always a unique and challenging topic. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pupia, for that explanation. We appreciate that. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Do we have any old business in front of us? Hearing none, we will now hear from our superintendent, Ms. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. On behalf of the administration, I would like to congratulate Meg Guerrero and John Camerato, as they are officially retired with board approval, but that won't happen till June fourteenth. So we'd like to thank them for, for their years of service and do wish them well in the future. As you are aware, from last month, our wrestlers have had a wonderful, outstanding season. As I had mentioned, we had a number of our students who had qualified through the, to the super regionals, which was Nate, Nate Shipley, Dom DiAgostino and Shalom Thomas. Nate and Dom qualified and medaled at the PIA double A state championship in Hershey last weekend. Nate finished eighth and Dom finished sixth. Nate and Dom joined Adam Parcell as the only state medal winners for wrestling at Interboro. So that is quite an accomplishment. I want to congratulate Coach Dan Tobin and Coach Eddie Hall for their outstanding support of, of our wrestlers this year. And we look forward to having these boys continue their success next year. I also want to give a shout out to the Interboro Club Ice Hockey Team, who is currently leading their ICSHL division, which is the Chessmont American, with a standing up eight, one, headed into their last week of the regular season. So we want to wish our ice hockey players the best as they finish their regular season and they head off into the playoffs. So good luck. The high school stage may not be lit right now, but our Interboro Theater has been busy preparing virtual shows over Zoom rehearsals. We hope that you'll join us March nineteenth and March twentieth to view the shows. The link will be live from Friday, March nineteenth at seven PM until Sunday, March twentieth at nine PM. If you head to www.innurboroughtheater.com, you can purchase tickets for streaming. Just a reminder to parents that spring bake break begins on Wednesday, March thirty first through April fifth. The district offices will be closed April first, April second and April fifth. Classes will resume Tuesday, April sixth. We hope everybody enjoys the break. And of course, spring is very close, is going to be here soon, Saturday, April twentieth. And I hope that everyone will enjoy the nice weather that's coming and, you know, the days are a little bit longer. And we're taking advantage of being outside again and enjoying the weather. So with that being said, thank you very much, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Phelps.
All righty, thank you, Ms. Riley. Do we have any comments from any of the board members? All righty. Hearing none. The Interboro School District will continue to hold all future meetings remotely until further notice. Please visit the Interboro School District website, www.innurboroughsd.org for further information. On Monday, April twelfth, twenty twenty one, the Finance GBO Committee meeting will be held at seven PM. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held on Monday, April nine, nineteenth, twenty twenty one at seven PM. The next regularly monthly public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held on Wednesday, April twenty first, twenty twenty one at seven PM. Thank you all for coming. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.